The Board would like to welcome the audience and thank you for attending. Viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board Committee meetings live at TCAP.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're at the review approval portion of the agenda. Is there a move to approve as presented?
A move to approve the agenda as presented.
All those in favor say aye. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Go. Just trying to go too quick there. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to public comment. Is there any public comment? No? Alright, then we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented? Actually, I believe...
Yeah, I just was looking at the meeting minutes. There's one small clarification I think would be desirable to make.
We just approved that.
No, consent.
Oh.
We have to do.
For meeting minutes?
Oh.
Yeah.
You approve the agenda.
You want to...
Yeah, you actually have to pull off your...
Okay, I just want to pull off the meeting minutes then from the consent calendar.
Discussion item. Can I just say this could be discussion item A and we'll push the other item to B?
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
There's nothing else on the consent calendar.
Actually, you're right. So I guess we will just, we don't need to approve anything on the consent calendar. So we will just go ahead and, never had that, so skip that session. And we will move on to discussion 6A. Discussion of approving the minutes from the previous meeting. Secretary of Boundary, you have one change?
Yeah, just under the superintendent report on the meeting minutes from last time. This is item number 5A, Legislative Update, 2nd paragraph. Whenever we refer to the Supreme Court, we normally distinguish if it's the US Supreme Court or the Michigan Supreme Court. In this case, it was the Michigan Supreme Court. So I just wanted to add the word Michigan there.
Okay. Everyone okay with that change? I believe, because it is a change to post the minutes, we will have to have a roll call on that one, right? Because it's, let's just... So there is a motion to change the minutes?
Yeah.
Or request to change the, modify the minutes?
Add a word.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Second to Andrew Raymond. Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
And Trustee Newman-Bow.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to the item, the Budget Supplemental and Staffing Decision, which is the reason for this special meeting. And I do appreciate, sorry, I was trying to get through everything as quickly. I know there's an awful lot of commitments and we've got a couple of board members who may have to leave really quickly and everyone else has commitments too. So with that, Budget Supplemental and Staffing, defer to Dr. Val Maitner.
Yes, so earlier this week, I informed the Board. They had a lot of questions from different parents across the district on some issues of different classes and configurations. So worked through the week with our Finance Office and Curriculum Office to identify some numbers, class sections, numbers and sections, all of that. And that was, a request was made by the Board President to put a special meeting together. So I've asked Dan Tiesworth, again, our Chief Academic Officer for Elementary. This has all been based on elementary questions, as well as our Assistant Superintendent Christine Thomas Hill, to put some numbers and just a few slides together to give the Board information and some questions that I know that they would have. So at this point, I'm going to pass over to them and they'll get together and take us through those numbers.
Sure, welcome everybody. So right now, we'll start off with kind of going through our current state at TCAP. So just as far as a quick review. So this process happens back in the spring during our mission-based budget process. So we look at what projections we're going to have moving into the next school year the best we can based on the numbers that we have. Kindergarten's always a little tricky in that, but we can pretty much move everybody forward and then create class sections. Some of those sections, based on numbers, involve how many sections of students we have by a divider that we use. And then some of those involve splits. Some of them have multiple sections per grade. Some of them might be single sections per grade. Then as we move through the summer, obviously kids drop in and roll, drop in and roll. We come back again. I know that when I was at Westwoods and several other schools, make sure we have some kind of buffer in that number because we always have to accept, you know, a student that goes ahead and moves in our particular area. So for instance, we might try open enrollment or school of choice. And we always kind of say, at this point, we don't have room because we got to make sure that we don't go into overload or cause a split by someone else coming in from outside. This particular year for our city schools, they did a lower cap than that, just to make sure that we have room. For instance, when Central Grade may have to move into here, we want to make sure we have room for that. So that cap was a little lower. Also at Willow Hill and Eastern, with some space constraints, they were also one of those city schools that actually had a little bit lower cap to keep room for the people moving in to our district. So with that, for instance, this is our current state. So this shows all the splits in the district. That's the first line. So we start with Blair. Blair has a 4-5 split. They only have 1/4th grade section and 1/5th grade section. That's a split. The average class size, when you split it, is about 28. If you were to run the classes with an overload, so say you didn't split them, your 4th grade section would have 22, your 5th grade section would have 33, okay? Every student after 29, in 4th and 5th grade, is considered an overload.
30.
The 30 is the average, every student after 29. So just if you want to look at that one and kind of process a little bit with the first one. As you can see, usually what happens with a split is we have grades that are close to each other. One of them's high enrollment, one of them's low enrollment. And then we have to think, when we go through this process, this involves teacher, building principal, and they try to have to figure out, can they run a section of 33, right? 33 5th graders in a room. So some constraints that go along with that. Is the room big enough, right? Should we have 33 5th graders in a room? Classroom composition is huge when we think about these decisions, right? Will the room run better if we can split the group up a little bit as far as behavior or other learning styles we have? So as we move through the other grades, those are all the other splits we have. Central Grade has a 1-2 split. Split class size is averaged out to 23 if you do not, 27 and 24. So the 1st grade is an overload. Cherry Hill, 1-2 split, same idea. The 1st grade would not be an overload if you didn't do the split. The 2nd grade sections would be an overload. And for these bigger schools like Cherry Hill, these are multiple sections of 1st and 2nd grade. So you might have 2 sections of 1st, 3 sections of 2nd, and then at some point, the number becomes that you have to split somewhere in between in order to stay out of overload. The Ashers by Cherry Hill, that 4-5 is when this was put together based on data a couple of days ago. Like, this is so fluid as far as, like, these numbers probably are changing right now as we're in the board meeting. They actually came down from 30, so they don't have an overload and they don't have to do the 4-5 split anymore at Cherry Hill. But again, September 15th, you know, you have a family of triplets move in and all of a sudden you're back in overload again. So going through to Eastern, Eastern, 3-4 and a 4-5 split. Same idea there, split classes 22 and 25, manageable. Overload classes, again, you can see why there's a 3-4 and a 4-5 because your 3rd grade is an overload at 29, your 5th grade sections are an overload at 23, but your 4th grade, that's a great number there at, I'm sorry, at 30, but your 4th grade has a great number there at 23. And then same for the other grades going down. Same idea, low grade, high grade. One unique thing, like for instance, about Silver Lake, if you look at their numbers, like they have that number, if you go into average overload class size at 2nd grade, 37. That's a really hard number to deal with in elementary school. Because anytime you have a class of 37, you're going to have 2 sections of around 18, or you're going to have to split because you're never going to run an overload at 37 2nd graders. So those are unique numbers that, you know, Silver Lake has, that they kind of deal with. That can't be, I mean, you can't fix it with an overload. If we don't want to do the split, then the third option is to add FTE and create another section, and then you're running classes of 18. So, any questions over like split overload?
So just, at what point in time did the district realize this was the scenario with the split classroom?
So several of these schools were split coming in, right? These were, this is stuff that happens in the spring where we create splits based on the numbers we have during mission-based budget, right? We have our total students, we have a divider. That divider creates the sections we have. So if you have so many students divided by 27 and 1/2, you come out with 13.04, 13.5 sections. We round that up to 14, and then we go ahead and spread that across the grade levels the best we can to avoid splits and overloads. And then moving, and then as August goes on, it's very fluid. So some of these splits or overloads are created quite late. After it was decided that after that special schedule came out, when more kids were added, based on the finances of the situation, we created those splits instead of overloads.
And was that with the teachers' input or the building principals? What part of the process did they have and determine this?
After the mission-based budget came out?
Correct, yeah.
Right, those splits were created and passed on to, those particular splits were not. We just, as far as the fiscal part of it and budgetary, we created those splits. And remember, we don't have principals back until just 2 weeks ago and teachers back this week.
Right. So some of these were anticipated back in the spring, but the ones that were late breaking, if you will?
Very late, yeah.
Yeah, so the, it sounds like the teachers don't, they are not aware that this is going to impact them until...
It could be.
This last week?
Yeah, yeah.
Themselves?
And that's a lot of, we realize that's a lot of pressure on the system, right? As far as figuring out, and even, either way you go, there's pressure on the system, right? As far as adding kids in our classroom. And the part that you can only add, for instance, when you go to an overload in 2nd grade, I mean, how, where is the breaking point? It's a little different building per building, right? Where you can get away with an overload based on classroom composition. Maybe you can run a section of 33 3rd graders at a building because they know the kids, they know the support they have, they run their intervention, they're Tier 3, but there's one, it might be 1 kid in overload, and they decide that's not going to work based on classroom composition.
So are there some teachers that actually are okay with teaching a split? Maybe they even prefer that over having an aid?
I would say that the majority, I would say when you look at, if you have to compare teaching an overload to a split, right? No one wants to teach a split. If we could do it in a perfect world, we would eliminate all students in overload and add FTE. Fiscally, that would be something we'd have to look at. I think it does bear, I think the majority of teachers, wouldn't say majority, but most of the teachers would go towards overload. But there is a definite advantage to looking at how we can break kids up and when we have a situation with classroom composition, and we can move them between 2 sections instead of 1, or 2 sections into 3. That helps tremendously.
Do they prefer the overload with the aid or with the extra money?
I don't think there's any theme to that as far as which way it goes. It is up to the teacher to decide which way they go with it.
Any statistics on, like at Eastern, you've got a split with 3-4 and then 1 with 4-5? Any information on pairing a 4th grader with a 3rd grader rather than a 4th grader with a 5th grader?
No, we would look at some curriculum, and as far as the math goes, I think the 4 to a 5 is a little easier than the 3 to the 4. The 3 to the 4, you know, they're looking a lot at trying to get their fluency as far as the multiplication goes, while in 4th grade, they start to get in that division, so there's quite a break there. You know, as you get down in those lower grades, those splits become more challenging and challenging, right? We never do a K-1 split. Because if a kindergartner might be first time into a building, you know, that 1st grader's got 180 days under their belt and the learning there, it's not even more than learning, right? It's just adapting to the school environment. Even 1 and 2, right? Even if you think about a 1st grader coming in, they might not even turn 6 yet, you know, getting in a split with a 2nd grader who's 2- and 3-digit addition. So, and we're very conscious about when we split these, you know, the teachers are part of that split initially to make sure how we split them, right? What's the best way to combine these students together?
Okay, that's the other part to my question, is how do you, how do you figure out which 4th graders are going to go with 3rd grade or with the 5th grade?
And then that varies based on where they are learning-wise. There's never a set thing, right? We never say, we never take our NWA scores in math and say, these particular 2nd graders that are at the top are going to move into the split with the 3rd graders. Because that might not always work out classroom composition-wise with the other 2nd graders you have left.
It's good to know that the teacher's involved.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Christine, do you want to?
Sure. So this is just some basic information for costs. Obviously, we had some splits already identified. We try as best we can to give teachers their assignment before they leave in June. Some, we just can't. We have to leave it a little bit to be determined, but we do the best we can to give them their assignment. So right now, you know, we're looking at a total of 12 splits. As Dan said, there's a couple of buildings that you really can't solve eliminating this split with a overload. At best, we can solve 8 of those by adding 14 overloads, and that's $335,000. So if you're trying to avoid them altogether, you have 2 options for the 2 schools that, 3 schools that really can't tackle this by adding an overload. You would have to add FTE. You could just straight add full-time FTE for $480,000 to create an extra section. Or like we did a long time ago, you could add some split support of a certified teacher .4, so basically 2 days a week to every teacher that's in a split, and that would be the $240,000.
So that's the difference between the cost of an aid versus a certified teacher?
Yep. Yep, the overloads are the assistants. And in order to get rid of 8 splits, you need to add 14 of them. That's the $335,000. And then you would add either the 1st or 2nd option on certified staff. If you wanted to provide them with certified staff support, we usually do a .4. That's what we did in the past. That would be the $240,000. If you strictly added FTE to add 4 sections, that's a full-time 1.0 teacher at $480,000. So you would add the $335,000 to 1 of those 2 if your goal was to eliminate all 12 of the splits.
And just Connie, talk a little bit about our current pool of teacher vacancies.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, if money was, even if money was not an issue, it's the applicant pool. Approximately a week and a half ago, Cortade had been on the bubble for an additional FTE. Their enrollment increased, so we added that teaching slot. Looking at our pool of applicants, we had 3. We set up interviews or tried to set up interviews with all 3. 2 of the 3 had already accepted jobs elsewhere. And unfortunately, we had the 1 candidate that we were able to hire. At this juncture, we do not have any viable elementary applicants for new positions.
So in other words, this is hypothetical.
Correct.
We don't have...
But just to give you the data.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. But we don't have even 2 teachers that could help with the 4 split teacher support. It's not an option.
You can always look at and pursue for split supports in some of those because they are temporary, going long-term sub-teachers. But again, that's if they're interested in that type of assignment. And at this juncture, there is no guarantee there.
Right.
Typically, when we have somebody who's interested in a more full-time, and they have the certification, when we have the posting up, and we have run an elementary posting all summer long that we continue to refresh to bring up to the top of the search engines. And so any of our long-term subs who are, you know, theoretically interested in being permanent teachers could have applied for those and have not.
Could you all speak to just what, because the buildings are all aware and the affected teachers are aware, what is their preference in terms of eliminating these 8 splits and then the other 4 teachers who would still have split classrooms? Are they the 4 that might have been identified back in the spring and knew that this was coming? So at least they had the summer to prepare to teach.
Yeah, several women, and even some that are identified that could be, so there are some splits that could be identified to be alleviated with overloads, but they still don't, they'd rather stay with a lower number. You know, there's a secondary problem that where if we start the year overloaded, this is another reason we do splits, is one, the biggest reason is class size, obviously. But if you start the year in an overload, obviously there's a chance it can go down. But then there's a chance it can go up. Like, I've had grade levels go up as much as 5, shouldn't seem like a lot, especially secondary-wise, but elementary-wise, the 1st grade that starts the year at 30, you're already in overload, right? 1st grade goes into overload at 27. So now you're adding 30. So at what point, so then what do we do? Well then, either we add a teacher, right, a full FTE, or then we have to go back and create a split, which you can imagine it's pretty chaotic for a family, right? They have to switch teachers. Now this, we have to have a teacher, you know, in October or November begin to bring these 2, figure out where they are learning-wise. There's many, many, do we have a room? You know, some of the, space is also an issue. We talk about adding FTE in some of these buildings that are full. So, you know, as far as creating a split, can we do overloads all over the place? Yep, we could overload a whole lot. But at the end of the day, kids do continue to move in eventually. You know, it could be a safety issue, right? 38 5th graders in a room?
Or you could have made the commitment and you actually go backwards. And you end up with very low classroom but higher class.
Right, right, and that would be something to start to plan out, you know, now as far as looking at what we do next year as far as what that commitment looks like, right? As far as, if that's what we're going to do, we just have to prepare staffing-wise, room-wise, financially. And historically, this is the process the district has used. Long before my time, everything, using the formula, doing that. So this is nothing new. There was nothing new in that process this year. The only thing that was new in the process this year is, again, those city schools, knowing that we have some issues of capacity. We made the point of, in those early grades, when we try and get inter-district open enrollment and out-of-district school of choice, we narrowed down to much lower the 24-25 number to make sure we had room for kids moving in where we didn't have the overload. Our other outbound schools don't get as much request because, maybe because people work in town, all those elements. But we knew with Central Grade with, again, not trying to make it bigger to be able to move in here now that the bond has passed especially. We know with Willow Hill, we have no more space to be able to have kids in more classrooms. Eastern, the exact same situation. So this is the first year we put that process in place. And we sat with all 3 of those principals and went through those numbers during mission-based budgeting to make sure that was all understood and clear. So that we don't end up with the situation of, you know, if you take up to the overload amount and then kids, you know, from kids from out-of-district or out of the boundary area, then you get, kids move in, you end up in some of these situations we do have in the higher grades of these buildings. So we have tried to remedy that situation in these buildings that have had those issues. It's just going to take us some time to cycle through it.
And that's, I was going to ask that question. So do you think that by putting those parameters in place, which we just did, that over the next few years, it will cycle?
Maybe, I mean, a little bit of an issue we have, especially at Eastern, is we have a lot of kids that have moved into that boundary. So I think right now, I want to say 4 1st grader kindergartens?
How many kindergartens do they have?
Yeah.
They...
I believe it's 4.
They have 4 kindergarten and 1 JK.
Wow.
And we limited down enrollment.
And 3 preschools.
And 3, and we limited down in that area specifically because of that. And the uniqueness of it is it's not necessarily, obviously, the number of kids determine how much room you have, but it's where the number falls with the group that makes the adding a section or splitting, right? Even with a small amount of students, like 37, right? What do you do with 37 kids? You either create 2 sections, like I said, of 18 and then 19, you split, or you have a huge overload. To give you an example, JK, for instance, we kept it at 20...
After 21, we provide an assistant, but per contract language.
I'm just thinking, in that building in Eastern, we kept, we stopped taking enrollment, I want to say at 20. And they had enough to add a section of requests that we didn't take. Almost a whole nother section of, remember?
Because of space and capacity.
Yes, because of space.
And with the capacity issues, we, it's, we don't have room unless we do art and/or music on a cart, which we have heard that that's not ideal either.
So we are taking, you know, all the things that we can. However, that one particularly, we've had a bunch of kids move into that area. In these lower grades, so it's even more pertinent that we're taking, you know, precautions from that standpoint.
Do you think, just hearing you say that this is how it's always been done, do you think that there are some things that we can address maybe sooner than...
A little, we think there's a couple ideas, I think. But in the end, to me, this is the financial structure that this has done. And you know, if you kind of see the next slides, it's what kind of commitment do you want to make to this? If you go to, you know, to eliminate the splits. Christine, you want to talk to the slide?
Sure, yeah, this was, so I'm, Erica, you might remember this, but I think it was prior to 2016, we had to go into some pretty major budget cuts. We used to provide a .4 certified teacher support for every split, and that was cut as part of a major multi-million dollar budget cut and was not put back in. And then the bottom is just showing, if you truly wanted straight grades without using overloads, that's, you would need 18 teachers for this scenario to do that, and that's 2.1 additional.
But we don't have any.
Right.
Well, but we could have, we could have. I mean, if we would have known...
Yeah, we don't have any right now.
You know, but if we would have known before teachers took other positions in other districts, like we were just talking about, the Downstate, they've all started school already. So a lot of people have, you know, they, yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know if we'd have 18, right? But, you know, if we would have known...
And would you have 18 classrooms?
Yeah, that's...
No, you wouldn't. You know, but again, financially, that's the premise you might remember the last 2 years. We've kind of said financially, that's where we live in, and that we got a little bit more in the budget. We did do some of that of every year, the last, every year I've been here, we've done that. This is the first year where we had nothing extra. In fact, we were $500,000 less than what we budgeted with a $3 million spend already from fund equity.
with a $3 million spend already from fund equity. So now we're $3.5 million, have a negative, uh, you know, budget from that standpoint that we've, again, 300 million, 300, 3 million we've made whole from fund equity, but if you do that, you know, you have to make a decision where it comes from, just as if even we're doing what we're looking at possibly tonight, that I'm, I'm recommending, you know, that is a spend right now out of fund balance.
So clearly, just because I know we've got a couple of board members and staff who have to leave now, but, um, can, can we just say, like, let's put off any future discussions, future years and scenarios till a later day? We can set a time, maybe we've got a few things going on, we could talk about it at the next board meeting, we're going to agenda item anyway. So we can set some timeframes for that and just really focus on how to get business done today?
Yeah, and, and maybe we look at this from a special, like a special board meeting, or, you know, that we?
Study session.
A study session, exactly.
We kind of thought about potentially that in February.
Yeah, to really?
Well, actually, you know, I talked to Christine about that, I actually think it has to be, spring is going to be too little too late. You know, we already start bu- budget, you might remember, you got to have it adopted, so, you know, November is starting to have some conversations.
So we did, and we did add, uh, uh, that as an agenda item to the next full board meeting, so we can go through that whole discussion then. So I just, uh, I know I'm extra vigilant of a couple of board members and staff who told me that they had to already have left, so I appreciate you staying, but I wanted to make sure we at least get to the area. So, is, so is the plan one of these?
I'm making that recommendation, what we can do?
Yeah.
Right now, with the staffing we have, we could do, you know, up to, you know, the plan that we have that, I'm just asking approval to move head-on, is the eight eliminated, um, splits, the, with those 14 overloads, um, you know, estimated at 335. You know, that's kind of our max, I mean, if all took A's, probably it would be less, but we just, you know, from a liability standpoint, they even can, can take the money and even change their mind later and take the A.
And I would say that's our maximum exposure, eight, like Dan said, our numbers are changing daily, so it might not actually be eight and 14, but right now, that's the picture we see, so that would be the maximum risk.
And again, I just wanted to make sure I understand that, so with the four remaining splits, those teachers, those are the teachers who had been aware, they are, they are prepared and they are okay with having a split classroom?
But, but again, there is no split support, we don't have anybody to do that, that's something the board wanted to look at down the road, if we get increased enrollment or something, could, but as of right now, we don't even really have that option with people.
Understood, yep.
Hopefully, you'll get some student teachers in.
Well, we, we have some, but not a lot in those grades, but when they graduate is when you can maybe have a pool to start having quick conversations.
And we've been really fortunate in that regard, I mean, we have strong, when we have strong student teachers, we typically, knowing or anticipating vacancies, will offer them jobs in the spring, site to be determined, so there are kind of sitting pool out there.
Because you'll remember, we do incentives for early retirement, so that helps us know that.
And we're also evaluating for coaches.
That's true as well, correct.
Well, I would just like to say thank you to, uh, the creativity in coming up with the plan, supporting the teachers. Um, you know, I'm most keenly aware with what have, was going on at Eastern, because I have two kids that go to Eastern. Um, so just thank you for listening and, uh, coming up with a plan. I know, obviously, budget, uh, is real and, um, the money situation is a real thing, but I think that this really supports teachers and especially kids, especially at these lower levels that, you know, as a parent, I mean, I think, for me, an over, I know, as a parent, an overload is always better than a split, uh, where you've got one either trying to rise up to a different level or one coming down to a different level, so, um, so thank you.
So I move that the board authorize administration to spend the funds necessary to provide overload assistant support as presented.
Second. Oh, Andrew, there? All right, um, any other discussion? Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
And Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes, motion carries. And so I did notice after we, uh, moved and canceled consent, there was an item on consent calendar, and that was the closed minutes. Um, so unfortunately, we're going to have to now, if, if I will make the motion to, um, which does require a supermajority, to amend the agenda to add item 6C, which would be approve the closed session minutes from the previous. It's a second from Trustee Byrd, any further discussion? Uh, Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Yes, supermajority is done, the, the agenda is amended.
So you need a motion to approve the closed session?
Now we are on item 6C, can I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I will make that motion.
And who is making the motion to approve the closed session minutes? Uh, do I have a second? Second for Beth, um, I don't believe, do I, we do need a roll call in a closed session, so do a roll call on that one, please.
Uh, Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes, motion carries. All right, now we're back out of discussion onto public comment, there is any additional public comment? No, okay, we are moving on to closing remarks, really appreciate having all seven board members, I thought we were down to four or five at one point, but we're up to seven. Um, thanks for staying to the end, uh, thank all the staff for attending and everything that's gone into getting to this point. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move we adjourn.
All right, second Beth, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, meeting adjourned.